Good afternoon. The time is 1:30 PM. The date is Thursday, November 6, 2025. It's another beautiful day here in paradise, and I'm happy to call to order the regularly scheduled November 2025 meeting of the West Palm Beach Zoning Board of Appeals. I'll first ask our Board Secretary to please call the roll.
Deborah Peters. Dana Pecot.
Present.
Christopher Hagan.
Here.
Emily Savage.
Here.
Sherry Hack.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Jonathan Burgess and Alfred Fields are not present.
Okay, thank you. We do have five members present, so that constitutes a quorum, and that also does mean that all members today sitting up here will be serving as voting members on the case that's before us. At this point, I'll ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please be seated. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes. In our board packet, we had the minutes from the September 4, 2025 meeting. There was no meeting in October, so that was the most recent meeting. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to review the minutes. If there are any additions, modifications, or corrections, I'll entertain those. If not, then we'll just ask that someone please make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Motion made by Board Member Pecot, and seconded by Board Member Hack. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved. The next item on our agenda is just any report from our city planning staff.
Good afternoon, Board Members. Angela Van, Assistant Development Services Director. Staff has no updates. We just need to note that at, because I forgot to put it on the agenda, at next month's meeting, we have to do election that we do every year with to reelect the Board Chair and Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to remarks from the chairperson, the only remarks I have are just to go over what the procedures are for the, any of the cases that come before us today. So I'll go through those procedures now. Matters before the Zoning Board of Appeals are quasi-judicial in nature. Anyone wishing to speak, including members of the public who wish to offer comment, will need to be sworn in. The applicant will then make a presentation to answer any questions from this board. The applicant will then be followed by city staff, who will provide a presentation and a recommendation to the board, and also answer any questions. Members of the public will then be given opportunity to provide comment, with each person receiving up to three minutes. City staff will also insert any public comment received in advance of today's meeting, such as emails, voicemails, et cetera, into the record. The applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal. The floor will then be closed. The board will go into executive session for discussion of motion, and then a vote. As a reminder, this board requires four votes for approval. With that, that concludes my remarks. I would also like to note that Board Member Fields has joined us as well, too. So that means that Member Peters, unless anyone has to recuse himself, you will be an alternate. So you'll participate in discussion and any questions of the applicant or staff, but then when it comes to the vote, then you won't sit for the vote unless somebody has to recuse themselves. Okay? At this point, then I'd like to have anybody who wishes to speak on the case that's on the agenda, please rise, and our Board Secretary will swear them in.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have no continued cases, so we'll move immediately into the case, item C1, Roman numeral six, item C1 on our agenda. I'll ask our Board Secretary to please read that item into the record.
Let me declare before we start.
Oh, yes. Let me, we do need to do ex parte communications. I thank you for the reminder. So let me start with Board Member Fields.
As to the matter, let me get that back out. As to the matter of case number 3555, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
And just as an update, I think it's, the case number is 3434?
3434.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, and now Board Member Hack.
Okay.
As to matter, case number 3434, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Vice Chair Savage.
As to matter 3434, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions, and I request that these disclosures and all written communications be part of the record.
Thank you. Board Member Pecot.
As to matter 3434, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. And Member Peters.
As to matter 3434, I have not had ex parte communications, have not received written communications, have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, and have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. And for myself, as to Zoning Board of Appeals, case number 3434, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. With that, now I'll ask our Board Secretary to please read the sign into the record.
A request by Fernando Rodriguez for a variance from Section 94-302B of the city's zoning and land development regulations regarding the installation of a fence and gates along Bunker Ranch Road to be one foot higher than what is permitted within the front setback. The subject property, consisting of approximately .18 acres, is located at 344 Bunker Ranch Road, within Commission District Number Five, Commissioner Christina Lambert.
Thank you. We'll now ask the applicant to please come forward to make a presentation.
I don't know when, it's not going full screen. Probably need to make it larger right here. That's probably good, right? Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for being here, volunteering your time. My name is Fernando Rodriguez. I live in 344 Bunker Ranch, and we're requesting a variance for our driveway gate and our pedestrian gate. When we submitted the original permit drawings, it was shown as a five-foot gate. Then during the permit process, we were asked to lower the gate to four feet, which we revised the drawings, but when the fabricator made the gate, I guess they didn't make the adjustment, and they installed the five-foot gate for the original drawings. We like the five-foot gate height. Obviously, it gives added security and, you know, privacy. We, you know, we've had instances in the past where we've had people come into the house, try to get into the backyard. Obviously, my wife and daughter, whenever they get home, you know, they want to feel that extra sense of security of having the gate, because even though it's not a main thoroughfare, it's pretty busy, being that Bunker Ranch has a traffic light. It even has speed bumps in it, because cars keep coming in and out from Dixie, trying to, you know, cut through either Olive or Flagler. You know, we've also had instances where our dogs run out into the street, and, you know, we want to avoid, you know, a bunch of different scenarios. And obviously, you know, we've lived here for over 10 years now. We've always tried to do everything, you know, following the rules. We would, it's already built. We would like to, obviously, keep it, and that's why we're here today, asking for a variance to be able to keep that and basically protect my, you know, my family, and also the security for ourselves, you know. That's basically the request. In this image that you have on the screen, you can't really tell that much, but what it's reflecting with the green squares, those are all of our adjoining neighbors. They've, all of them have given us letters of support, which I've included in the next slide, except for the one two houses west of me. That's under construction right now, so nobody currently lives there. And the one across the street to the east, across the other street, which the owner recently moved out, and the current resident, we don't know. So I just wanted to bring that up, that, you know, we have support from all of our direct neighbors to be able to keep the gate. The next slide, I think Mr. Roman is also going to touch on, those are similar gates in our street or within very close proximity, that are gates that are taller than four feet. And I know that that doesn't constitute as, you know, grounds for approval automatically, but it's just to show that, you know, there is precedent in the area of similar gates that have been installed. These are all the letters from our neighbors that are expressing support. It's kind of hard to read at this scale, but those are all of our adjoining neighbors. The only, I don't, the only one I don't have written there was a verbal support from our next-door neighbor to the east. But aside from that, those are all the priorities that were adjoining us and have expressed support for the variance. And then, these are some pictures of what it looks like today. So the first one on the left, that's looking east from the sidewalk adjoining the house. The next one over is obviously from the sidewalk across the street, looking towards the house. Then the small one at the bottom left is looking west on the sidewalk. And then, if you were driving west, that's what you would see. And then a picture of the inside showing how the cars are parked in the driveway. And then the only other thing I have here is, you know, a copy of the permit drawings, which Mr. Roman also has in his, in his presentation that shows the original permit, the issued permit drawings. They had a five-foot height. It was approved with, sorry, it's zoomed in, with the note that it had to be 48 inches, which obviously was not followed by mistake, and that's why we're here today, asking to see if we can, if we can keep the five-foot gate in lieu of the four-foot gate. And that's it. That's everything I have.
Okay, thank you. Just wait for a minute, and we'll ask any board members if they've got questions of you, and I'll start on my right with Board Member Hack. Any questions to the applicant?
No questions.
Okay, Vice Chair Savage.
So I understand, before you begin construction on the fence, you submit the permit. So was what you just showed, the permit that was submitted to the city ahead of building, ahead of building the fence?
Yes.
Or the gate, rather?
These are the approved permit drawings. Let me see if I can, so these were approved by the building department with that note saying that they needed to be four. So this is the permit, the approved permit drawings. But when they built the gates, they built it to the original design, not the approved design. And they were installed, I didn't notice the error. Frankly, I didn't even notice it until the final inspection was called, and the inspector flagged it for being too high. So that's why I requested a variance to be able to just leave it as is, instead of tearing it all apart and rebuilding everything one foot lower.
So did you sign like a contract with the fencing company for the five-foot, like five-foot gate?
Yes.
Okay. And, but that was, that was not, like, that was not, you know, but the permit was applied to as a five-foot gate, and then not approved as a five-foot gate.
It was, yes. This is the actual permit drawings here. It's showing a five-foot gate. When it was reviewed, we were told that it had to be a four-foot gate, and we revised the four-foot gate, but when the fabricator and the installer installed it, they made the mistake of making it per the original size. And, you know, which is what we wanted from the beginning, but obviously, you know, that's why I'm here, to see if we can just keep it as is versus having to redo everything.
And then you mentioned that there had been incidences, like of suspicious, I believe you used the word suspicious-looking individuals at your property. Did you, like, have police number, like, police report numbers, or what happened with that?
So we've had, we've had instances where people have tried to get into the backyard. We had one instance where we did call the police. It ended up being that they were in the wrong property. They were in the neighbor's, they were going to the neighbor's house. The neighbor told them, yeah, the gate's open, come in. And so this person walked in and tried to force the gate open. Obviously, my wife was home with our daughter. I was at work. She was, obviously, had no idea what was going on. She was scared. She called the police. The police came, and we didn't press charges or anything. It was simply a, you know, a confusion. But yeah, we've had a few instances like that, where people that we aren't expecting and don't know have tried to walk in. And obviously, you know, since we've had that gate, we've also had a lot less people just knocking on the door, just trying to sell stuff.
Okay. No further questions.
Thank you.
Okay, Board Member Pecot.
No questions.
Alternate Peters?
No questions.
Okay, Board Member Fields?
No question.
Just regarding the permit set, who was, was the fence company handling the permitting then for you, or?
Yes, the fence company submitted the permit.
Okay, so then they were definitely in receipt of what you have on the screen that had, and can you scroll to the part where it has the note, where it said it was a proviso, and it was written in red?
Sorry.
Yeah. So, so this is what they received back from the building department was this set, and then the building department had stamped that proviso on there?
Yes, this is, this is what I have on file from the, from the permit.
Okay.
It was shown as a five-foot gate. So I understand where the confusion came from.
Right, yeah. That somebody at the fabricator could be careless, thinking, okay, well, we received the stamped permit drawings and ignored this. So we don't know how else this was communicated to them, if the building department verbally told them or not. We just, we don't know.
I don't know. I'm assuming, no, there was no communication between the two. So, yeah.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I don't have any other questions. Thank you. So you may be seated, and we'll have staff now come up and make a presentation.
All right. Hello, my name is James Roman. I work here at the city. I'm going to be presenting the case number 3555. A little bit of a correction there. I think there was a typo on the, on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, thanks for letting us know. So then, I guess, if we can, yeah, you were right, Alfred. Okay. Yeah, I was looking at the agenda, so that, that list is 3434. So if we could, Board Secretary, let the record reflect that the, all the ex parte disclosures that were made were related to case number 3555. Thank you.
All right. So I'm going to be presenting the case for the variance at 344 Bunker Ranch Road. The request was made by Fernando to install a gate one foot higher than what is permitted in the front setback. The requirement is four feet, 48 inches, and what was built was five feet. So he's asking for a variance of one foot. The reasoning that he is installing this drive slide gate and pedestrian gate is because he has security reasons. There's been multiple incidents of random individuals soliciting, and some scary incidents of knocking on doors. And he is worried about vehicle traffic because of his daughter and dogs. But by mistake, it was built at five feet instead of the four feet. Here's just a general overview of the site. As you can see, it's in between South Dixie Highway and South Olive Avenue. As you know, that South, Dixie Highway is a general commercial zone, so you're going to expect Goodwells, gas stations, motels, and other retail stores in that area. And the other side is just mostly just residential. To do a little bit more of a deep dive, the surrounding neighborhood generally does not have any fences in their front yard. It's mostly just used as hedges as a form of privacy, and mostly the gates, driveway gates and pedestrian gates are located more towards the South Flagler Drive, more to the historical and older buildings. Only three on the street use a drive-through gate. Most of them just have no gates, just a hedge, or no fence at all. Here's what was submitted to the zoning apartment. You can see on the survey that it's marked at four feet high, and the pedestrian gate is also marked at four feet high. The schematics that was uploaded, I believe, are just standard schematics they just submit. So there was a proviso placed on both on the survey and on the schematics, saying to not go above 48 inches. And the survey reflects that the driveway gate and pedestrian gate are supposed to be at four feet. Here's some of the photos that I was, that I took. You can notice that the bottom-left photo, if you kind of look towards the bottom, the, there is a potential gap that the builder has to come back out there to refix. It's... I'm just gonna, should I continue? The screen went black. Okay. So the, there is a problem with the fence being built. One, it was built too high, and there's multiple gaps in between it, so it doesn't really secure it from a wandering child or whatever dog they might have. I just have a brief video of what the atmosphere is like around that house, all right? Now, there's not much sound, but just imagine birds chirping. That's the house that he referenced being constructed. Sooner or later, there's going to be a car going to go over a speed bump that is located right outside of his house. So the cars do come by a little fast, but they do stop right outside of his house because of the, because of the speed bump, and that's the look of the house right there. You can see that some of the houses down the street, that there is no fences, no hedging, anything of like that sort. So some examples around the neighborhood, I chose the, most of the houses that are on the same street. There's not that many drive-through gates, in particular, anywhere on this area. I've seen maybe one or two, three streets down, so I prefer to just pick the ones that are on the street. This one is, was approved at four feet in height, but because it has decorative features, it's allowed to have a 10% more. So that's roughly four inches. So you can see that the gate is at four, and then it swoops up, which is a decorative feature, allowing it to be an insectable amount. Even though it is higher, it is still within our code. Here, you can see that the plan was approved with an also proviso saying to not go above 48 inches. In the highlighted top section, you can see that it's labeled as four feet high, and on the, on the plan itself, it's also labeled as four feet. The house, similarly to Fernando presented, as it is also a four-feet-high fence, or I should say wall, but it has decorative features. The wall itself is slightly below four feet, so they use, they're allotted amount plus to 10% four inches on top, so it makes it appear slightly larger, but it is just roughly about our code. It was constructed about 30 years ago, in 1996. As for the suspicious people, as it is very concerning, so I pulled the police report of the area. The only one, the only call made to 344 Bunker was for an alarm audible, but around the area in the quarter-mile, you have 14 reports of suspicious people. Two happened at the intersection, and one happened a couple streets down. Now, that might be the incident that Fernando was talking about earlier. Now, as for the speed and the cautious of the vehicles, in the quarter-mile, there's only been 33 traffic stops in total, and four at the intersection of South Dixie and Bunker Ranch. We would have to recommend denial because of the following four reasons. There is no special conditionings or circumstances particularly to this property or structure. The front configuration, if at four feet high, will have a similar character and configuration as other people in the neighborhood. The actions of the applicant. The hardship arises from his applicant's own action, where in this case, the builder, not from the property itself. The special privileges. Granted, this variance would confer the special privilege not enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district, as all other front yards or gates are limited to four feet, other than the two houses I mentioned about the decorative height feature. And the literal interpretation, security concerns, doesn't demonstrate that a four-foot-high gate will deprive the applicant to secure its property. And that's my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you. Yes, we'll start with Vice Chair Savage. Any questions of staff?
No questions at this time.
Okay, moving on to Board Member Pecot. Any questions of staff?
No questions.
Okay, and now moving to Alternate Peters. Any questions of staff?
No questions.
Okay, Board Member Fields?
No question.
Board Member Hack?
No questions.
Okay. So you showed the exhibit that was, I think, this, one of the same properties that was cited as having a gate that is higher than four?
Yeah, there's two, use decorative features to go 10% higher.
Well, there were, and there were two or three Well, there were, and there were two or three in the applicant's presentation that were, I think, over on Olive Avenue, not on Bunker. Do we know the history behind how those?
We do not know the history of that. He pointed out to one other house that I wasn't aware of. I haven't done any research to it. But it's probably the similar case of decorative features.
Right, and they, or they were installed without pulling a permit or something along those lines? Do we know? Yeah. So again, we don't know, I guess.
And Angela Van, since Olive is considered, I think is a major arterial in our code, we do allow fences for certain thoroughfares to go up to six feet in height. And I believe Olive is one of the ones that's considered a major thoroughfare. We don't allow them on local streets, but we do allow them on certain highly traveled roads in the city where residential fences can go up to six feet in height.
Okay, okay, that explanation makes sense, I guess. That helps. Okay.
And the same rule applies for Flagler Drive.
Okay. Yeah, no other questions. Yeah, thank you. At this point, we'll now move to public comment. So if, I'll open the public comment. If there's anybody here in the audience who wishes to speak related to this item, please come forward. I'll ask staff if there are any additional emails, voicemails, or anything that needs to be entered into the record as public comment?
No.
Okay. The answer is no, so I will close the public comment. I'll ask the applicant if he'd like to come up and make any closing remarks or any rebuttal before we go into executive session. Feel free.
Hello, Ken. The only, so the only other property that I showed on the plan, on the, on the graphic that showed a gate that's more than four feet is on Bunker Ranch Road, the house across the street from the, the one that had that 30-year-old gate. They do have a gate that's above four feet, straight, and so it doesn't swoop up. And it's, you know, it's not on Flagler, it's not, it's on the same street. Again, I, I'm just, I'm just, I would, I would love to, to keep the gate as is, as what we originally wanted. And that's why we're here, trying to make an appeal, to get a permission to keep it. That's, that's everything I have to say. And thank you all for, for being here.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll now go into executive session for comments and discussion on this item. So I'll start off with Board Member Pecot for discussion.
I feel like if they had developed it with some sort of design that could have helped impact this, and maybe we wouldn't be here. Again, if things were revisited with the construction company, the fabricator, that could have prevented this as well. Just kind of observations.
Okay. And alternate Peters, discussion or comments?
No comments.
Okay, thanks. Board Member Fields?
Tough one, but... No, no comment.
Board Member Hack?
Just wondering if the gate company's willing to put in the four feet.
If you, would you like to address that to applicant? We can, we can do that. Okay. Sorry, would you come back up, sir? The question was if you've had discussions with the, your gate contractor, if they, if this were denied and it has to go to the four feet, have they indicated that they would be doing that, or based, you know, for, on their dime?
They, they would have to follow whatever the decision is here, obviously. They, they can't close out the permit until we have, until we have either an approval or a denial, and they would then have to refabricate. To the question of, would they do it without added cost to me? That has not been discussed. But they would definitely, either, we would either have to keep it and, and as he, as Mr. Roman mentioned, add the two pieces that are missing to fully close the, the two open sides, or they would have to basically tear it all down and redo it.
Okay. Does that answer the question?
Yeah.
Any further discussion or...? Okay. Vice Chair Savage?
I'm sorry, I probably shouldn't have let, had you sit down. My question, my question for you, I just, one more question is, have you already had discussion with the fence company to come back to close in those sides? Is that something that you're going to be doing? And did you delay because of the potential problem of closing out the permit?
Correct. So I had already mentioned the two openings. They said that they would, they would come back and fix it, but we needed to see if they would have to redo everything or just finish that out. So we're waiting on the decision today.
Okay, understood. I just, I think that one thing that's, I don't have any further questions for you. I think one thing that is important to point out is that, you know, I think it was almost all of his neighbors sent letters of support for this. And I will say aesthetically, looking at that video, it does look very nice. And then, you know, in the neighborhood, I don't, it's, you know, it's not like it's an eyesore, is what I would say.
Okay. Thank you. Just, my commentary is, I, you know, feel for the predicament you're in. I, as a homeowner myself, I'm putting myself in your shoes, if the same thing had happened, I would be doing the same thing, I think, pleading to, to have this, you know, to, to have this consideration made. I do have some concern about, and I realize every item we take here as a board is a standalone item, and we don't set precedent because each site is different, but I do feel it is a bit of a slippery slope. If, and it's hard to say that this wouldn't, you know, that this wouldn't be looked at as some sort of precedent. Looking at the staff report, you know, what are the, there are a couple criteria for variance that require the, you know, these to not be actions of the applicant, or in this case, the applicant's contractor, or something that's not, or, or there has to be a situation where there's something peculiar to the, the land or the structure of the building. And again, I, it doesn't feel like that those variance standards and criteria had been, unfortunately, had been met in this instance. And they do, that is a requirement that those, those be met when we're considering variances. So I realize a lot of those are open to interpretation, but looking at staff's interpretation about those two items particularly, it, I do agree with, with staff's, staff's findings on various criteria A and B about not complying with those. And there were a couple others that I, I think also, again, may be a little debatable, but the, the other issue is, and as a city resident, from time to time, we do have concerns in my own household about, you know, safety and those actions. But I don't, it sounded like, it's, the comment was made that a lot of the things that were concerning have stopped once the gate was installed. And it doesn't seem like there's anything magical about, okay, well, a four-foot gate doesn't keep, you know, those people, you know, that, that are suspicious out, but a five-foot gate does. It seems like it's more the presence of a gate is what's keeping, you know, a suspicious person out, as opposed to, you know, that a four-foot one doesn't keep a suspicious person out, but a five-foot one does. So the argument, using that as an argument for the additional foot in height didn't, didn't seem to bolster the, the case about the, about the security. It seemed like it was more just the presence of the gate. But again, those are just my interpretations of the, of what we saw. So with that, is there any final discussion or comments from anybody on the board? Okay. We'll entertain a motion then.
I move that the zoning board of appeals denies ZBA case number 3555, a request by Fernando Rodriguez for a variance from Section 94-302B of the city's zoning and land development regulations for the construction of a driveway slide gate and pedestrian gate along Bunker Ranch, within the requirement front setback specifically relating to the minimum property development regulations in the zoning district. The motion is based upon testimony presented along with the application submitted, and, submitted and staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes finding of fact that not all of the criteria in Article II, Section 94-38D6 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have not been met. The standards have not been met, including the following. Do we have to read all of the standards?
You can, so that, in the staff report, starting on the page number six on the bottom, lists the variance standards, and it starts off with A all the way through J. Staff's findings were that A, B, C, D, and H were not met. So depending on what your, what your interpretation is.
Yeah, so I was questioning to the attorney, should we read each one in full, or could we just say A, B, C?
You can reference the alphabet identification in staff's report for this meeting this date.
Thank you. Standards that have not been met, including the following, variance standards referenced, A, particular to land structure or building, B, actions of the applicant, C, special privilege, D, literal interpretation, E, minimal request, F, comprehensive plan, G, public welfare, H, reasonable use, I, permit used in the same district, and J, financial hardship, as presented in the report from staff on November, what's the day? November 6th, 2025.
Just, just a clarification, a few of those were, were ones that staff found they did comply, but you're saying that they don't comply? Like J, financial hardship, I think staff said that they do comply?
I'm sorry. Correct.
I think on the screen, the, the screen keeps going in and out, but I think on the screen is the staff's, the computer screen showing the staff's findings in front of us.
Okay. So the, following that doesn't comply is A, B, C, and D.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. The motion was made by Board Member Field, seconded by Board Member Hack. Is there any final discussion on the motion?
I just think it should be noted that, you know, the neighbors that are all the ones who would be potentially affected mainly by that, as they live there, they're actual homeowners, they all seem to be in support of this, you know, fence. And it is, and I, I do understand what, based on situationally, what the applicant said is, you know, he's probably most likely going to suffer a financial hardship if this motion is, you know, if this variance is denied. Seems like it was an accident, and so I, I think that it's tough to financially hurt somebody for what seems like it was something that wasn't their fault.
Thank you. Any further comment and discussion? If not, I'll ask our board secretary to please call the roll. The motion was for denial, so a yes vote would be for denial, no would be against denial.
Dana Pecot?
Yes.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Emilyne Savage?
Nay.
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Sherry Hack?
Okay, so the 32, I'll ask the, our attorney, we need a four-person?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, alternate, not voting.
So we can look for a substitute motion or...? Yeah.
Okay. I move that the zoning board of appeals grant ZBA case number 3555, a request by Fernando Rodriguez for a variance from Section 94-302B of the city's zoning and land development regulation for the installation of a driveway slide gate and pedestrian gate along Bunker Ranch to be one foot higher than what is permitted within the front setback, relating to the minimum property development regulations in the zoning district. The motion is based upon the testimony presented, along with the application submitted and staff report, which constitutes competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes findings of fact that each of the criteria in Article II, Section 94-38D6 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met.
Motion, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay. Motion was made by Vice Chair Savage and seconded by Board Member Hack. Any discussion?
You know, I would, I just would like to reiterate to the board, you know, the reason why I voted to, against the denial of this is because of the financial hardship that this is going to cost the applicant, and because of the fact that there was no negative feedback at all from any of the neighbors. And so I would ask that this board grant the variance.
And I would state that the applicant did not apply for financial hardship, and that that was not stated as a reason. And we are not even sure that it will create a financial hardship at this point, because this is a contractor error based on the fabrication of the gate. And we can't start saying, because a contractor makes an error in not following the approved plans, then we open ourselves up to saying, you know, hey, now the contractors can now say, we're going to put it back on the homeowners, and then the homeowners can go and ask for a variance. And because they're asking for variance or hardship, we now start to supplement errors of the contractors, because they're going to see this as one that now, bring it before the zoning board. Let the zoning board feel sorry for the, the applicant, and we can cover our mistakes. I, I think we'll be going down the wrong road if we do that, and I, I still am against it.
I would like to respond that the, it's not just that, from the comments from the applicant, it's actually from the city findings, that there was a financial hardship. That, that's what I'm commenting on. Because that was a city finding, finding.
I didn't, I didn't take that as a...
There's a question directed to staff of whether there, whether staff uncovered a financial hardship if this were, if this request were denied. I, I'm not sure if we're, if we're interpreting the staff report correctly. If you don't mind coming up to the podium. The, the question, I believe, was whether or not, in the staff's review of this case, whether the staff found that there would be financial hardship involved if the, if this were denied?
We found that it wouldn't be, because it would be on the fault of the contractor. The contractor would go back out there to refix the problem that they caused.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would point out to the board also that in order to grant a variance, you have to find that the application meets all of the standards that's presented to you, not just one, but all of them.
Correct. Okay. Okay, thank you. And are, is there any further discussion here before we take the vote? We do have the motion and a second that are active.
I wanted to say something. Wasn't there some kind of financial hardship? Didn't the applicant have to pay a fee for the variance?
To go through this process, I believe there, there is, there is a cost involved in, in going through this process. So that's, yeah, there, there would be, that would have been incurred.
It's around $600.
Okay. With that, I'll ask our board secretary to please call the roll. Again, the motion was to approve the applicant's petition.
Dana Pecot?
No.
Christopher Hagan?
No.
Emilyne Savage?
Yes.
Alfred Fields?
No.
Sherry Hack?
Yes.
Okay, so I will turn to our board attorney, because we appear to be, in a quandary, we've got, both motions have failed to receive four votes.
So, so the action, neither action is approved. So, so the action, neither action is approved. You can entertain another motion, for example, someone, given that neither action pertained, either member could make another motion, but once again, would either be to approve or deny, so.
Could we table it for the next meeting?
You have that discretion, you could bring it back. If you table it, you would want to articulate the reason and what information you'd need that's different from what you've received already.
I table it to find more information, based on reading the zoning code. Motion to table.
Continue to...
Continue to the next regularly scheduled zoning Board of Appeals meeting, okay? And is there specific information from the, I am just trying to give direction to the applicant of what additional information they can bring back?
Can we confirm whether it's going to cost the applicant? Confirm whether it's going to cost the applicant money to change the fence back to four feet, or whether the fence company is going to pay for everything?
Okay, is that something that the applicant knows at this time, or no, you'd need to talk to your contractor, please?
I do not know at this moment. I would have to talk to the contractor and figure out what the situation is.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the floor, I don't believe we have a second yet, so is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Again, this is a motion to continue this item to the next regularly scheduled zoning Board of Appeals meeting with the request that the applicant bring back information regarding the, I guess, the financial ramifications of, of, if this were to be approved or denied, if the, if the fence had to be reduced down to four feet.
Mr. Chair, this motion can be approved or denied on a simple majority.
Okay, thank you.
I was just going to say, because it doesn't comply to A, B, C, or D, if they could come back and also kind of give us some feedback on why it would comply because they said it did not, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I would, I would support that too, that there are other, there are specific, in the staff report, there are specific variance standards, and they were articulated in the motion to deny specifically A, B, C, and D, but I believe H was also in staff's report, so if we could get additional evidence on how the applicant believes that those standards are met. Okay, with that, so I think we've provided direction to the applicant if this motion were to carry. We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay, I'll ask our board secretary to please call the roll.
Dana Pecot?
I vote yes to continue.
Yes, affirmative vote would be to continue.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Emily and Savage?
Yes.
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Sherry Hack?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes 5 to 0. This case is continued to the next zoning Board of Appeals hearing. Okay. With that, that concludes the cases that were on our agenda for today. I see Ms. Jones, oh, nope, I didn't know if you were approaching to provide initial comment. There is no, there are no administrative appeals, there's no unfinished business or new business, so that would lead us to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. At 2:24 PM, the zoning Board of Appeals meeting is adjourned. Thank you.